I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. First on our agenda, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as it stands?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove item G, Discussion of Senate Bill 654. We had a meeting on that late last week, and I thought that they would bring new information to this meeting after our work session, but that meeting did not bring out any new information, so I'd like to remove that item.
Okay, we'll edit to remove item G. Any other additions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have public comments. Mr. Johnson, has anyone signed up for public comments, sir?
Madam Chairperson, we do have people signed up. Each person will be allowed three minutes. We have a clock available tonight, so that when you're speaking, you will see where you stand on the three-minute time limit. The first person that has signed up is Wayne Martin.
Yeah, Wayne Martin, and you've got several concerns with what's going on in our schools. You know, this country was founded under God and freedom. Not too long ago, they've taken God out of school, and now y'all are taking freedom. It is not any of y'all's purview to take care of my children. My children are my responsibility. As I understand it, the school board decided that it was optional for a parent to send their kid to school with a mask or without a mask, and from what I understand, one person overrode that. My children will not be turned into sheep. A mask doesn't help anything. If you want to look at numbers, as Mr. Rice says, looking at numbers, looking at numbers, our kids have more of a chance of getting killed on the way to school. There are more kids since COVID has started that have drowned in swimming pools. So, next time we meet, are we going to meet on walking our kids to school and closing swimming pools? This is about risk assessment. This is not about turning our kids into sheep. Me nor my children will bow their knee to nobody, other than our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. This mask stuff is just a way to teach our kids at a young age to do what you're told. Don't ask no questions. Don't do what's best for you. Don't worry about your freedom. Don't worry about your individuality. Just do what you're told. Well, that's not going to happen, and I don't know what we've got to do, and I can tell you right now, there's not a lot of people here, but there is a whole lot more out in our community that feel just like I do. Maybe they haven't gotten here, but I hope, when it comes time to replace some of you, I hope they show up, and I hope we do replace y'all. Not all of you, but some of you, and actually get somebody in here that can think about common sense, not about what is, what are we going to get, and what are we going to benefit monetarily for these schools from the governor. Keep in mind, these teachers, these buses, these bus drivers, and school board members are paid with taxpayers' money. It's my money, that's his money, that's his money, that's everybody else's money. So you're not going to tell us what we can do, what is best for our children. About a mask, that doesn't even work. It stops 3%. It's nothing. So, change your mind on the masks, because I'm not sending my kids to school without them.
The next person is Kenneth Gaddy.
Good evening. This is the first time that I've ever spoken public. I'm Kenneth Gaddy. I'm a father, a healthcare provider, and a Stokes County resident. And in this country, school, public school, is a North Carolina constitutional right, not a federal government right. The CDC is a federal entity under the National Institute of Health. So my question is, why are we following federal guidelines for something that is a North Carolina right? Seems to me a little bit of conflict of interest that Dr. Christine Wright is Dr. Anthony Fauci's wife, however, they don't have the same last name. She shares joint counsel with the National Institute of Health and the FDA. So, we have a pretty biased opinion there. My son has been on a mask exemption since the day that paper came out, and I did sign as his healthcare provider, in quotes, dad. Mr. Richardson has given me two weeks to get a doctor's signature. However, I don't feel like I need to get a doctor's signature. I provided immunization records and a school physical to go to school. These are mandates, these are not law. And I noticed we opened this meeting in prayer. However, the Lord is my shepherd, and I will not be our CDC sheep. And I think that if you want to send your kid to a school in a mask, that is up to the parents. That should not be made law or mandate by you people here. And that's what I have to say, it just should be optional. Thank you.
I've got a five-year-old daughter in kindergarten. She's five years old. Y'all want her to wear a mask? Are any of y'all going to be with her when she goes to the restroom and drops her mask in feces or piss, to tell her not to put it back on her face? Are any of y'all going to be there to guide her, to help her, to professionally instruct her on how to put on these masks and remove them? Every time you touch your mask, you're supposed to wash your hands. Those masks are infected with a disease as soon as you put them on and you start breathing. If you haven't been professionally trained, you're doing it wrong. All right? I printed off a few things from the Stokes County website here, and it says that y'all's philosophy statement is "All children can and will learn." Well, y'all ain't doing that. Governing principles from y'all's website. "It is the top priority of system excellence, schools provide opportunities for individual students to succeed and overall student performance to improve." Y'all ain't doing that. Parental involvement. "A system of excellent schools involves parents and decisions regarding their own children." The educational program and inner schools. This is from y'all's website, do y'all know that this is in there? School initiatives. "In a system of excellent schools, each school initiative improvements to the educational program and services for students, and involves staffs, parents, and students and school-level Board of Authority and Duties. Number one, providing every student with the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education as defined by North Carolina Supreme Court. Are y'all doing that? "All powers and duties conferred and imposed by law respect that public schools, which are not expressly conferred and imposed upon some other official, are conferred and imposed by law upon the board." By law, not mandate, law. Y'all have the right to do what's right. I've got something else written here, but I can't find it. If y'all ain't willing to stand up for our kids and do what's right, so y'all can get a little bit of money from the government, they ain't even told y'all they're going to take y'all's funding, they just said it's possible. Keep that in mind.
My name is Candy Fong. I have two children in the Stokes County school systems. I have submitted two religious exemptions for my children, both of them were declined by Dr. Rice. And in my religious exemptions, I did not ask for your school goals, that you were, you know, whatever your school goals are, or what they didn't do for you at the time. I did not ask for anyone to research for an exemption form for my religious exemption form. I simply stated in my religious exemption form for my children, for their spiritual health, that they will not be wearing a mask, and I'm telling you today, my children will not go back to school with a mask. I am telling you today that the numbers you have given to, whether it be on Facebook, whether it be in the health department, whatever it is, you're only giving the parents just a little bit of a number, 30 students, I'm going to give an example, in the middle school, you're not given the percentage, you're not given the whole number. 800 and something students, and only 30 have COVID? That's less than 1% of students, but yet you're mandating this mask. You're taking away their freedom, you're taking away, they can't even breathe in these things. How about you go to the gym class and go running inside the gym class each day with a mask on? Run. That's what they're expecting these students to do. I won't tolerate that, I will not stand for that, and my students, my children will not go back to school with a mask. My child was told today that he needed to put a mask on. I told him, no. I called the school, which I know he called you today, Mr. Bottoms. You were aware that I was coming this afternoon? Yes. Okay. So, I told him that Kendall will go back to school without a mask, and he told me that there's no online learning. Well, as he stated, education, we, our students deserve an education, and it's an equal education in Stokes County. You are able to provide that, and you will provide that, and my child will go to school without a mask on. And I urge all parents that do not believe in this mask, or do not want their children to go to school with a mask, I urge all of them to send your children to school without a mask, because it's your right, it's your parent's right. You're taking away those rights. And how dare you send these parents on a panic for a medical exemption form, and you know, and you know, and you know, that these doctors have been told they are not to fill out these exemptions forms for medical. Every one of you knew that, but yet you sent these parents on this run, thinking their children are going to be exempt, and they were not. Can someone yield their time to me?
I'll give you a moment.
Okay. So, I'm here to say today as well, you've got more issues in Stokes County schools than to worry about this mask. You've got drug dealing out in the parking lot, that was done today. My son witnessed it today. You've got, you've got all, you've got children vandalizing other kids' properties, and you're letting that happen, but you're worried about a mask? A little mask? And you're kicking my students and my child out of school because he won't pull his mask up, or he will not wear a mask, but yet there's drugs being dealt in the parking lot, and kids' cars are being vandalized? And you're worried about a mask? We have much more to worry about and to teach our children than to wear this stupid mask on their face, and my child will not wear it. Thank you.
Jean Hughes.
We might want to have an awkward prayer. You know, I didn't think I'd ever see this country getting in shape. You know, they've took God out, they've took God out. Our country was a very godly nation. Obama said, he tried, he's tried to turn, you know, he's tried to turn us around, and he's still got his hand apart. But I tell you, these masks don't work. This one says it gives you more breathability. This one says, don't treat anybody, don't wear this if you're treating anybody with COVID. What good is that? Not a darn bit. Pardon my friend. They turn them off to face. I'm a school bus driver, Bus 71, King and West. I don't wear masks, period. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it. It's all about control. Wear a mask, take a shot, do what we say, but it's all about control. Now, the Republican states are trying to fight this. Federal mandates, full hockey. You want to wear this, this? Now, that's really going to protect you, that's really going to protect you. That too, but they want, they want you to wear something, they want to control you. I'm one here that I, I've got my God-given rights. If God wanted, I know y'all had your closed meeting, and you're going to have nothing after this. You done made your minds up, it don't matter what we say. That's okay. It's going to be Election Day one time, and I'm going to remember, I'm going to remember very well, y'all serve us, we don't serve y'all. And I tell you what, I've got a copy of the Constitution, Bill of Rights, the Mayflower Compact, it's all about God. We come up here to have religious rights and our freedoms. This separation of church and state was to keep the state out of our business, not out of the church. You know, you say, you can pray at home, you can go to church, but don't talk about Jesus. Jesus Christ is my Lord and Savior, and He's the only way you're going to get to heaven. He said, I'm the way, the truth, and the life. By me, you can be religious all you want to be, you can, you know, do all this, but we want our rights. If I had some children, it would be hell-oh, they would not wear no mask. And I've got three days suspended because I drive a bus. At first, they said, y'all voted, we didn't have to wear masks. Right? It's up to the parents, and that's the way it should be. And then I think Mr. Rice changed it, because the governor put pressure down, it ain't right. It still should be up to us. I don't wear a mask unless I may to. Y'all had COVID, I think we're all going to get four. This mask ain't going to keep you from getting COVID, not, nor one of them. I never thought I'd see this country getting in shape. Everybody's got the right to say what they, how they believe, except us. We can't say, no, you got to agree with us. You know, we don't have our rights. Yes, we do have our rights too.
The next person on the list is Julia, and I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Did you just roll your eyes at me? Okay. All right. So, I'm coming back up here because I didn't mention anything about our teachers. Lord, please be with our teachers. Have you listened to them? They do not like these masks, they can't teach with these masks. Have you been up there and taught for eight, 10 hours with a mask on, all day? Probably not. They do not like it. They are frustrated. Have you listened to them? Do you care? Do you care about the morale of your staff? I mean, and the funding that you're going to get, just like you said, I mean, you already have it for this year, right? What are we worried about the funding for? We're here for our kids, this is not a healthcare facility.
I'm not worried about the government.
This is not a healthcare facility. This is an education facility, and it needs to be treated like that. Education. And I do plan on resubmitting my religious exemption form for my children, because I do not accept it at all. That is my religion, I shouldn't have to get up here and explain it to you. God knows. And you know what? You all will be judged one day. Thank you.
That completes, that completes the list.
I think what this is going to take, as far as a part of the community, I think what it's going to take is we just don't send our kids to school. The problem is, is we're funding our schools already. Every Friday, when everybody gets paid, we're already, why are we letting them tell us what we're going to do with our children? Let's just don't send our kids to school. I've had dealings, I've had to go up to the school on multiple occasions for males touching my female daughter. I went to the principal, we'll take care of it. No, they didn't. It took my daughter to come to it physical, because that's what I told her to do, because if the school ain't going to do nothing about it, we're going to do something about it, because you know why? You know what's awesome? Because on that birth certificate of all five of my children, y'all aren't on it. I am. You're not, you're not, you're not, none of y'all are on it. They're my responsibility, whether you tell them to wear a mask or not. This is absurd. We all, we all know what this is about. We might be a small county, one small county, with not that many people, but what y'all are afraid of, what local, state, and federal governments are afraid of, is when we start to stand up. We've been tried to be controlled one time before, and we won't be again, because it didn't work the first time.
Thank you all for coming out and sharing your time and sharing your feelings regarding masks. You know, this board, early on, did choose to give parents the option, and then once this state mandated quarantine sticks kids at home, it makes it extremely difficult, and we just have to be in a public school facility, abide by those rules, unfortunately. I do think your concern should also be heard at the state level. That's where these rules are coming from. And again, I have small children in school and kindergartners that had to wear masks, and it is very difficult. I do hear you, and...
Amendment, it's not a law. It's not a law.
Right. And again, I appreciate your input, and if anybody else has anything to say or not, we'll move on, because I know we have a lot to cover. I can't get into a back and forth, I'm sorry, but...
You say it needs to go to Raleigh. Who's responsible for taking this to Raleigh?
I would say the people.
The people or the elected school board? Isn't it the elected school board?
It could be elected members, it could be other representatives, it can be anybody, yes, sir.
Okay. That's why we're bringing it to y'all's attention.
Yes, sir. Thank you for doing that.
And all these kids wouldn't be out of school if you weren't following the silly CDC guidelines of quarantining everybody within 15 feet after 15 minutes. Just send them to school, let them do their thing. Like I said, they stand a better chance of getting into a bus wreck on the way to school than getting harmed from COVID.
All right. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent is presented.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Next, we have on the discussion agenda, the testing results 2021, I believe that's Mr.
Sands.
Mr. Rose, could you get the background, please?
as it applies to the 2021 school year, and Dr. Rice has already mentioned Senate Bill 654, which addressed two of the items that typically are in the presentation that I do for you regarding school performance grades, as well as school growth. And as you see there, the two sections of the Senate bill that covers those, that because of the COVID and the circumstance going on behind the 2021 school year, the state board did, or has been instructed not to calculate achievement growth or performance scores or grades for the individual school year for last year. As a result, there will, there will be an annual report card that is presented, but it will have minimal data related to the school performance. So, that's what is typically some of the highlights that are there, but, so if we can, go on to the second slide, please. Again, as you see there, we also will not be performing or identifying any additional low-performing schools from the 2021 school year, or consistently or continually low-performing schools will remain as they were from the 1819 school year, and then schools that were previously identified shall continue to carry that label that was there, and they will follow the plan of improvement that was presented to you back when they were initially identified. And that last bullet is something that the law does cover, about written parental notice, just to making them aware of the status of their school. With the 2021 school year, the schools were not required to do that, however, we had already taken initial steps, so the parents of those schools have received those letters, and just to let them know that they do remain in the status of either low-performing D or F schools and those things. So that has already gone out prior to this bill actually taking effect. So some of the highlights that we are able to see is, this is a very similar slide that we've had in the past, we can see for this school year, for the EOC and EOG combined data, we had a 48.1% proficiency rating for female students. Now, again, because the 2021 school year is much different than any other that we've ever experienced, I want us to not so much look at the percentage, but how do we compare against the state who went through the same circumstance, and then how do we compare against? And some of the slides you'll see in just a few minutes, there's some data in parentheses, and that's how much of a slide we saw in those particular areas. So, we still are exceeding the state in the female proficiency rating, and we also are exceeding the state in proficiency rating there for male students, who were at 45.4 across all of those. And then you see the economically disadvantaged students, they're higher than the state average. I think that's a slight increase over how we were in the 1819 school year, even though our proficiency rating is at 36.4, we are still much higher than the state average. And then our cohort graduation rate sits at 87.5 for this past year, and this is the first time in three years that our percentage actually did go up, and then we do have two schools who continue to exceed 90% graduation rate, and you can see there, with the early college actually having 100% of their students that should have graduated last year, graduated on time. This is very difficult to see. This, these two, the next three slides is simply to give you perspective from the past. This is nothing, no new data here, this is where we were at as of the 1819 school year and where our growth, and I just left that on there, just so that you have it as a reference point. And again, I did note over underneath the title that says, "No school performance grades or growth indices would be issued for the 2021 school year." So we have the elementary school, you also should have, you can go ahead and go to the next screen, should also have the same information for the middle school, and then the next screen will be that same information for the high school. So again, those were not calculated for this year. To the next slide. To the next slide. So I went six years out for our graduation rates, since we did see a slight increase. And so you can see where we did across the trends of all schools, and then as a county, where we're seeing a bump there at the county level for the last couple of years. I do wanna point out Metta Brook, just, just so everybody is aware. Metta Brook is one of our smaller high schools, and there is language in the accountability rules that say a school that doesn't, doesn't have 30 students is actually used as a three-year calculation versus a single-year calculation. So sometimes you'll see reporting for Metta Brook being a single-year calculation, and then others, and so this is the note, the asterisk there is just to let you know that this is a three-year calculation. So it is not just your 2021 school year, but it's also your 1819, your 1920, and your 2021. That entire three-year cohort, and what percentage of those students did graduate by 2021. This is similar information, and again, I know this is very small print. I hope you have a printed copy of this. But this is just a trend across different subgroups within the graduation population, and how we did there. And we can go through those if you have questions. So then I wanna point out, so the next couple of slides is where we really get into the data and talk about, where did we do in comparison to the state? Give me just a second, I need to grab my glasses so I can see those numbers. As we're looking at the elementary data across reading, math, and science. So as you see there, we have the state average and then the county average. So one comparison that we can make is to make between where the state and the county. The other comparison that we can make is what I've put inside of the parentheses. The parentheses, the number inside the parentheses, is where the amount of decrease that we saw, and then the amount of decrease the state saw. So again, if you look at those numbers, for example, there in third grade reading. Okay, so we were, the state was sitting at 45.1, we were at 38.8. But then in terms of the decrease that was observed across, since the 1819 school year to the 2021, our amount of drop, or our decrease, was very similar. And so you can see that trend across several of our areas. And this decrease, and where we saw these decreases, is what's gonna then drive our instruction to do that learning recovery that we wanna do now for this upcoming school year. So before we move on to the next slide, is there any questions about this particular one? Because this is probably the slide that has the most information on it in terms of where we did, how did we do as a county compared to how did the state do as a whole? All right, we'll move on to the middle, middle school slides. Again, the same information, reading, math, and science is the values that we have. And again, you can see that the trends for the county, to be honest with you, is that we did a better job at the middle school than the state did, in that we didn't have as, as large a decrease. Not that I would say our data necessarily suggests that we're doing a bang-up job at the middle school, but our decrease, so again, in this scenario, I look at where we failed. Eighth grade, for example, has been an area that we've struggled for the last several years. State saw a drastic decline. For example, in math, they dropped 19.9 percentage points. We only dropped eight and a half. So if there's a light at the end of the tunnel, is that we did not show as, as much a decline as the average did across the state. And then very similar information for the high school, all of the assessments and all of the data that is collected for the high school, again, for a given year, as you recognize those numbers. Those numbers are the one, those subjects, I mean, are the ones that were used in the past for calculating the letter grades. And so I just included those, so we have a kind of different data points that we use when we're evaluating our high schools. Not just our middle, math, sciences, and English, but also ACT and work keys. Career, college career readiness, workplace readiness, those kinds of things. And so you can see how we saw compared to the state. Very similar information, just presented slightly a different way, just so you can see the trend. Again, we knew there would be a dip in the 2021 school year, just because the mode of instruction and different things that we had to do. We know that there were some struggles that our teachers faced. But I wanted you to see that trend, because our goal is definitely to get back to the 1819 plus sum, so that we regain that, that learning that was lost. And again, same trends there for the sixth through eighth grade. You can see each one of the subjects separated, and then all the way through science for the eighth grade course, changed from the 1819 school year to the 2021. And then very similar information for the demographic, the data points that are collected for our high schools. I will point out that there are two pieces of data that was left off of the reporting for this year. We're not sure whether it's gonna be added at a later time. But math course rigor, we always like to see how many of our students are achieving the higher-level math classes. And then there is a calculation that's always been put in there in the past is ACT. Once a student gets to 12th grade, they look at their ACT and/or their work keys, and whichever is higher, they look at that in terms of calculating a career readiness or a pathway for being ready to move on from high school. That year, that date has not been released at this point in time for this past school year. And then as I said in the initial slides, our CSI, our TSI schools that were identified in the past, no additional schools will be added to that, so this is simply our list at this point in time. They pretty much took the 1920 school year. As you know, there's a three-year process to exit from a TSI or CSI status. So it's almost as if we didn't have that year completely. And so this is our list and where we stand based on the subgroups that at this point in time are considered low-performing, or not meeting the same standard as everyone else in the school. Are there any questions about this data? If you have any questions after tonight's meeting, you're welcome to email me, and I will do my best to, you know, to address the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. Next, we have discussion of interactive board replacement bids. Ms. Barker?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to share with you, I have, honestly, these were my cheat notes for me. I have printed copies for you all. After I got here today, I was advised, just print copies for you all. So this is something I created last night for you all to go along with me on our recommendation for our interactive panel. Okay, while you're receiving those, we've received six bids, all included in your packet. After a careful consideration, we would like to recommend Clear Touch from Next Wave Tech as the interactive panel for Stokes County schools. After reviewing our required items and specifications, which are included in the RFP as well as your packet, Next Wave Tech met all of them. I also have a checklist that shows the checks. Well, hold that thought. I need to jump over. Yes. Sorry. That's in your packet. It's the one, I had to blow it up, because it's kinda tiny. If you'll look through the required items and specifications, you can see that Next Wave Tech met all of our items, our required specs. So that is why we went with this bid. At the bottom of that, there's blurbs on each company or each vendor, so I'll share that with you as well. We're recommending purchasing 513 65-inch panels with onboard PCs with no adjustable tabletops. After our committee meeting this summer, the elementary reps stated that the tabletop panel would not be used regularly, regularly, and space in the classrooms is limited. The specific breakdown is in your packet listed as the first choice A. This recommendation includes 53 interactive panels on adjustable mobile stands for Pine Hall, Lawsonville, one for each media center, and the remaining panels wall-mounted. Okay, advantages of an onboard PC. I'll be the first one to say, and I think Mr. Rogers can attest, I have stated that our desktops will work, and I still do believe that. However, let me tell you the advantages of an onboard PC. Seamless workflow, log on to the computer, the onboard PC, and begin teaching right away. No confusion on dual monitors and which screen to share. It allows the teacher to have a separate dedicated desktop for their additional confidential information, such as gradebook, IEPs, emails, attendance, et cetera. Teacher could use their teacher desktop to work with a small group of students, while another group of students can be working at the panel. Easier mobility, no USB display cables to plug, unplug, adapts to configurable classrooms. Higher reliability, again, no cables to plug and unplug, and robust designs with SSDs, which is the more modern hard drive, which enhances the reliability. Easier installation, again, no cables. Access to the Windows environment and teacher content. Built-in performance redundancy, six-core processing. It levels the playing field, allowing all teachers to have the same setup. All schools will be the same. Currently, we have different projectors, different sound systems, different lots of things. So as a tech support person, going into those rooms to provide tech support can be difficult. So less technical considerations. It's literally a plug-and-play environment. It's advantageous to teacher, classroom, or school moves. Setup will be consistent. And I know we've all been at schools where a classroom, a teacher has to move classrooms, and you have to get familiar with the setup there. So if they move classrooms, it'll be consistent. Same with the schools. If they move schools, it would be consistent setup there. It's advantageous for technical support. So after considering, again, the age of the current wiring that has been in place for the last past 15 to 20 years, wiring's the same age as our panels. The risk of it not working increases. I did have strategic connections assess a couple of classrooms who stated the wiring would work. However, with each classroom set up differently, the risk of incap, compatibility and malfunction is high. The fear of unknown wiring issues once installation begins in each classroom could lead to a larger financial burden that onboard PC could resolve, or would resolve. The majority of wiring is through the ceiling with the teacher's desktop at the back of the room. However, some are at the front of the room. Point being, our setups are inconsistent, which would lead to difficult tech support. Our current setup is erratic, so that is why an onboard PC would be advantageous to Stokes County schools. And I know as, as a former media coordinator, I've been on the top, probably shouldn't say this out loud, but I've been on the top of the ladder, in the ceiling, trying to trace the wiring, because we had a smart board that would not work. It was discovered on this past Friday that the operating system was, would not be included in the onboard PC, which would be an additional purchase of approximately $47,955.74. A quote was sent to me yesterday, because I reached out and said, "We need a quote for this," from Dale, for the Windows 10 operating system. This is a cost that is not a standard price listed by vendors because school districts' environments differ, some being Mac, some being Windows. If the school board would prefer the tabletop panels, the second choice in your packet, it includes the tabletop panel for the 11 elementary schools' media centers. That would, and we would have eight adjustable mobile stands for the remaining media centers, as well as mobile stands for Pine Hall and Lawsonville, with the remaining panels wall-mounted. Both options allow for each school to have a mobile station for meetings, assemblies, and such. So, questions? Ms. Campbell and I dove through, not quickly, the bids, and dissected, questioned, called, to get clarifications on things that we weren't sure was answered for our concern, and for Stokes County's concern.
Okay, I was noticing on the onboard PC, we have an Intel Core 5 and a Core 7. I know that the Core 5 is gonna be outdated way before the Core 7. What is your recommendation?
The 5 is more processor speed based dating.
Right. The 5 is just not as fa, as fast as a 7.
It's not as fast, but it would be, we felt like it would be sufficient.
Well, how much longer before that becomes obsolete is compared to the 7? I'm looking long-term here.
Sure.
I'd, I'd hate to spend that much money and then have a processor two years from now that's out of date and gone.
Yes, sir. We were being conservative. I won't turn the I-7 away.
Right. Because, well, another, a friend of mine's an IT guy, and when I was purchasing my last laptop, he was going over some of that with me.
Yes, sir.
And that's why I was asking that question. Because he told me not to get less than a 5, and this was two years ago. And he actually recommended the 7 then, which was sort of the newest thing out because of how long it lasts before it's upgraded, and we have all these compatibility issues.
I mean, we've researched, we've called, and everyone we've spoken to said the I-5 would be sufficient with what we have in our environment already.
Okay.
This is just running, the, the computer's just running this panel, so I think we're fine. The, the one thing I wanted to state is, and I'm gonna recommend it to the board before we move it to action, which I'm hoping we do tonight. The intent of the board was to get 75-inch monitors.
Yes, sir.
So that, for the 460 wall-mounted, would be, and we need to add $209,300 to make those ones, those 75 inches. I can understand maybe going a little smaller on the carts, because you gotta roll the cart around, and tabletop has to be the 600, or the 65-inch.
Why, why 65, why do we fight?
We felt the, the advantage of getting the onboard PC would be just as beneficial. And the one that we're, I don't know if you all got the chance to go to West Stokes and see the demo? Were you able to go by West and see the demo?
We saw the demo here.
Yeah, the demo's here.
65-inch. Several teachers came in at West and used, tried, tried it out and tested, and felt like the 65-inch would be plenty. We got it to back of the media center at West, and it's a pretty big space, and we could hear it perfectly and see it. I mean, of course, this, this screen is so much more crisp than what we have now, so.
I still say we add $209,300 and make the wall-mounted ones 75 inches.
Yeah, I, I would prefer the 75-inch. And why is it, why is it that Pine Hall and Lawsonville have the stands, just those two?
Just the, those schools are constantly moving classrooms, reorganizing from K1s or 1s. So just the, the flexibility in those schools, we thought that might be better served to make those mobiles to better serve those students in the classrooms with the flexibility in that they have an enrollment and structure and arrangement of classes.
I'd like to ask a question. Did you say that each of the media centers in the elementary school, will they have a wall mount and a flat surface one?
The intent was to get each media center a mobile, or each school a mobile. And of course, the teaching space for the media centers would be wall-mounted.
Wall-mounted.
Yes, ma'am.
The other one, the flat one, could be mobile, checked out, so to speak, so people could take it to their rooms.
If we change to the tabletop, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Did you propose a tabletop just for each of the elementary schools, just one?
Well, we, at our meeting this summer, the elementary reps were stating that they did not feel the tabletop would be utilized as much as comparable to the price difference that, and due to space in classrooms when you're laying it out flat, and you've got all the desks and the children in there, they felt that it would not be utilized as much in the classroom. Or, and if we were gonna do it, it would be better to get one per school, or not at all, and stick with the vertical.
Right. Well, I do have to, now I think about it, the classrooms are, once you get the children in the classroom, and the desk and all, it really is crowded. Even in the primary grades, it's very crowded, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I agree with you.
Again, are we okay with the, um, onboarding option and not wanting a, you know, do we, do we have it priced like the next newer option, the price difference? Do we know that?
For the new onboard-
Did you, that Mr. Bryant brought up?
Well, I think the I, the I set, what the I-7 was two years ago is now the I-5.
Okay.
So, I mean, the I-7 now will be the I-5 in two years.
That's a five-hundred-seventy-six dollar difference for five-hundred-and-thirteen boards, that'd be a two-hundred-ninety-five thousand, four-hundred-eighty-eight dollar increase. When we looked at it, we didn't try to shoot for the moon, we tried to be reasonable, uh, with this, but again, if, if you want the seventy-five inch monitor versus the sixty-five, we currently use sixty-five inch smart boards in our facilities now. These are a better picture quality. Our thought process was the room's not going to get any bigger, so they were able to see that size board in the past, the room's not getting any bigger, so the same size board would be okay. But at the same time, if you would like to add the four-hundred-
I have the number for seventy-five inch, if, and that's not the I-7, this is just if you go seventy-five inch, same, um, numbers you have in front of you except going seventy-five inch, it would be two million, one forty-nine, eight twenty-five, eighty. And I can make, and I believe that's in the packet as our, one of our scenarios. I could make copies of this.
I'm all the way down to D, it's not in here, but.
So would that be in the included, do we have as much ESTER funds left to do that, to move it up to the seven?
I would have to meet with Lynette again on this, because we met this morning with the sixty-five inch, but I, I feel-
So you kind of cut it close, did you?
To move to the seventy-five inch would be another two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-one-fifty-eight. So Ms. Moore, we had talked this morning, uh, about the ESTER funding and we knew that we had enough for the two billion dollar quote, do you think there's, be all right at that, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand?
I've got, I've got the Chromebooks listed next, so, I mean, it's-
Yep, we'll continue on then.
Either, let's, let's go ahead. I make a motion to move this to action either way so that we go ahead and just put it on the agenda because we need to vote and get off, off the, I mean-
Yeah, I would second that.
Because it's been delayed long enough, yes, sir.
But I am in favor of what Mr. Rogers said, I, I do like, and that's what my thoughts were all along, is we would get to seventy-five inch.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor of moving that to action?
Uh.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So are you, are you all saying that you're okay with the no ta- no tabletops, all onboard PCs?
Yeah, I'm okay with no, I, I agree, I think in the classroom, it's going to be kind of tight.
Well, first, I think a tabletop in a media center in the elementary schools would be advantageous.
Okay.
Everywhere else, I don't.
Yeah, and I could probably go along with that too. That's only, what, eleven?
Yeah, that's eleven and I'd-
That'd be choice B, that'd be choice B in there.
I took choice, I got four thousand.
Except change it, of course, to the seventy-five inch.
I did some rough numbers, uh, Lynette.
And is that portable? Would that be portable?
Um, well-
The tabletop, is that portable?
Like Ms. Moore was saying, after we go through the Chromebooks and see if approval on the money there, I do have in my cheat notes as well, if you'll look on the third, fourth page, ESTER money techno- allotted for technology, it's broken down and I was basing it on the six, sixty-five inch.
Okay, hold on. What I had figured was if we took B and we added four-hundred-and-sixty and upgraded to si- uh, seventy-five inch with a six percent sales tax, uh, and bid it out that way, leave the, uh, tabletops have to be sixty-five, the mobiles will make sixty-five for weight, we were at roughly two million, one-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-six cent, maybe a penny or two one way or another because I was estimating sales tax on the two-oh-nine-three-hundred.
And Ms. Barker, the question is, is the tabletop model is mobile?
It is mobile, yes.
It does not mount on the wall, so it is.
Right.
It does have to be sixty-five inch, yeah, it does have to be the sixty-five inch.
Thank you, Dr. O.
Sorry, I didn't understand, Pat, sorry.
I, I know, I tried to do that.
Yeah, only the sixty-five inch does that.
Oh, that's, that's really good.
Right, so is the board happy with that? The, the second choice B, but with seventy-five inch monitor for the five-oh-two?
When it gets to action, whoever makes that motion can spell it out and then we'll vote up or down and then we'll go from there.
Specify, okay. You can move on, Ms. Barker.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, the next, um, going to Chromebooks, um, the next item is, I've got it divided into student and staff Chromebooks. We did have to reassess the numbers that were requested at the beginning. We, I was going to, I had fifteen hundred, we needed to change it to two thousand due to some summer school, um, damages and repairs or beyond repair, so, and we have, um, some schools still have the Lenovo N22s and N23s and older Dells that need replacing as well. So we need to purchase two thousand of the HTG8 double E Chromebooks. We already have those in our district with some schools already having spare parts. Um, an updated quote was received Friday afternoon and I have that to give to you all. Hey, this is the student one and you already have the, um, staff one in there, um, so we need two thousand of the student Chromebooks and for the staff, we need to purchase five hundred of the Le- Lenovo Chromebook tablets, the two-in-one. Um, this is what we're proposing, getting for the staff, um, with the keyboard case and you can see the keyboard case when it folds back, you can fold it back and proposing getting a stylus so the teacher could walk around and cast and do notes and be more mobile. So this is what we're proposing for them. We are also proposing the three-year Melon warranty, um, this is recommended as well. Working on touch devices, I don't know if you've ever worked on a touch device, but it requires a much more delicate touch and most of us, um, are still learning honestly on the Chromebook repairs as far as replacing screens and keyboards and most of us in the media centers have it down pat as far as doing the, um, non-touch. These are more difficult, so we believe the extended warranty would be much, um, beneficial for our staff on those. Why tablets? Um, it will allow the teacher the ability to interact directly with the documents, slides, PDFs or websites with a PNR stylus. Projecting or streaming from the tablet, you can run a Google Meet, present Google Slides, show YouTube videos and write directly on documents from the desktop. Teacher can use a separate desktop or Chromebook logged into the Google Meet, so their Google Meet can be on their desktop, they can, they can reserve this purely for content, their teacher content, so they've got the whole screen for that. One teacher, uh, has been using his own stylus since fall of two thousand fourteen, has not used his document camera, so he used this as a replacement of the document camera. So he filled out diagrams, charts and fills out his students electronically using the tablet. This will allow the teacher to be more mobile, while you can move around with a standard Chromebook, the lighter tablet makes it easier to roam while presenting materials, having electronic version of written notes, graphics from class are much easier to post for absent or remote students. This will allow much more flexibility for the teacher to move around while still teaching and interacting with students. Um, with the Snowflake app, with the, um, interactive panel, the interaction with the panel is a smoother interface with the tablet. Also for in-class, the elementary teachers, much more easier to use for assessments. Questions on Chromebooks?
Yeah, here's my question, of the eight to ten tech assistants, we had to support these, how many have you hired so far?
Okay, we, um, I'm getting there.
Yeah, but you're asking us how we're going to fund this and I'm trying to figure out what we're spending.
Yes, yes, sir. Um, well, flip on over.
You just give me a number, I don't need to look at it.
I've, I've broken down the money and of course this is based on the sixty-five inch that I proposed, so that, that first part will have to be readjusted. The second part's got the Chromebooks allotted, that amount, and then at the bottom, how much we're spending this year and I've, I've guessed, I've estimated on year two and three. The tech assistants, we've heard, um, so far we've spent ninety-five thousand, we've hired one, um, we've hired two technicians, the second technician starts Monday, um-
But those technicians were the one that was placing South data, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you've hired one of the eight that we'd allocated-
No, sir, of the South data replacements, we've got one already onboard, the second one's-
Second one's coming Monday.
But that was a different pot, that was a different pot of money. We had approved two-hundred-thousand dollars in the budget to cover those two.
Right.
Now, and then we approved the eight positions at fifty thousand apiece.
The tech assistants, the tech assistants is what you're referring to. We've hired one, um, very qualified, we've reached out, both of us, she's reached out to Preside Tech and emailed and called, I've reached out to Sir Community, emailed and called and we've not gotten anywhere. Um, we've had several applicants, um, not truly, like, the one we've hired had a background in computer science and, and the skills, that's what we were wanting. We don't want to hire someone that's going to be not helpful going into the school, we want them to be boots on the ground and ready to work.
So simple question, how many do you anticipate hiring?
I anticipate needing, we would like one per area, west, south, north, and then a roam, one for roaming, so we're thinking four, yes, sir.
So there's two-hundred-thousand dollars a year that we just freed up?
Yes.
That was a-
Sorry, I went around the world to answer.
Yeah, I was trying to get right there and-
I'm sorry.
Two-hundred thousand, now we have paid for the upgrade and the-
Well, in my last statement, according to Ms. Moore, between the, between the total technology budget approved from the ESTER grant and capital outlay, these expenses fall within the range of money allocated for our technology.
Yeah, but we just upped your two-hundred-nine-thousand-three-hundred dollars plus sales tax.
You do.
You're shaking your head in this direction, Lynette, you must think we're good. Okay.
We can make the work, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all we needed, thanks a bunch, you've been great.
I want to ask a question. Uh, on the Chromebooks, um, did, do we have enough money? You know how many were broken and the students broke so many over the district and then, so do we have enough to replace those, do we have enough money to replace all those broken ones?
And that's why we ended up upping the number, we were originally doing fifteen hundred, we, um, a little under that actually, so we, we got reports back that there were so many damage, damage beyond repair, so that's why we increased our number this year. Yes, ma'am.
Are, are we going to put some more guidelines in, um, more guidelines than we had in the past about damaged, uh, Chromebooks, because we had so many people that damaged them but wouldn't pay for them?
Well, we did add in our, the Chromebook agreement, um, itemized list of expenses so that we could be consistent across the county and that would help with finance too, so that it was in school cash, so that they could set that, um, school cash online, so it is itemized in there, the expenses, um, I mean-
So there's enough money for the school to get them repaired, if they can be repaired?
We're ordering more Chromebooks in, for each school, yes.
Yes, but is there money in the school budgets that if the Chromebook keeps up? But that's very minimal, those little fees are very minimal.
Well, they can use the Chromebook fees for parts and things and if we can allocate, like we have this money that we're purchasing devices, I think we're going to be in good shape.
Okay, so you think we are, that's good, okay.
Well, you all have allowed us to be.
Oh, good, I, I want, I want money available because it's really concerning that all these Chromebooks throughout the school just pile up and, you know, cannot be even used again.
Right.
And, yeah, so I just wanted to either, the schools have the money to get them repaired without having to wait and that we've ordered enough for the specs coming year. And you feel like that we have? I thank you.
I've got a question on our Chromebooks, now we're going to get two thousand here, but we're, we've still got three thousand or so out there that are used. How, do, are these going to line up as far as one's compatibility with the other, so to speak, as far as being dated or outdated, the technology between the two?
Well, some of the ones are outdated, that's what we're, the N22s and 23s, we're wanting to replace those and the, the Dells and get those out because they're no longer supported to be updated to the next Chrome version.
Right, and so I'm just wondering if the two thousand is going to be enough, counting the ones that are broke and everything and the ones that are basically already outdated to be replaced?
And some of the schools were able to use their tech fees to replace, like, small class sizes already this past year, so they were able to do that.
We're, we're trying not to buy a full replacement all at one time.
Right.
We're trying to spread that over a couple of years because, like, right now, if all of, we had bought all of them first time, we'd have had to replace all of them at one time.
Right.
But we, they came in over the course of about four years, so now we're trying to replace them over the next three years with this money, so that at the end of that three year, we still have some new devices out there.
Right.
And upgrading, so this is year one of our replacement plan.
Right.
And these will take the place of some of the oldest ones that were still in use.
Okay.
And then we'll swap those out and some people got grounded in the classroom.
Right.
Well, those will be replaced in year three of us, of course.
Okay. Just want to make sure we didn't have a bunch of outdated stuff sitting over here that's still working great, but we can't support it versus, you know, some other stuff over here, just want to be sure.
Um, the last page, I wanted to brag about our department, Amanda Campbell's managing our tech help desk, assigning task schools to the technicians, tech assistants and instructional technology facilitator. Um, the technicians update the Google Sheets with resolutions, she in turn sends out an update to the people that submitted the ticket and with the resolution and what has been done, so we've got great communication going on and the response time has been great. You can see the bottom of the page if you can read that, that's just a snippet of our ticket system and you can see, you know, as they're, as they're submitted, they're being addressed. So, um, Bob Ashford, the new technician, he's adjusted well, he's great with staff, he's hit the ground running. Our additional tech three starts on Monday, who has twenty-four years, um, experience as a school tech, so we're excited about that. The, I won't read the next part, it's things that we've got going on and in the works. So, the additional helps greatly appreciated.
It's been really needed and we're glad we can provide it. It has been so needed.
And just anecdotally, with some of our schools, they said they have some fastest turnaround times ever in getting our technicals. Appreciate the new team that we got, some places, the I team, uh, upgraded and used, the agents were there, but they're doing great now.
And also the input from the, um, you know, teachers that were on this original board that-
Tech teams.
Yeah, the tech teams that put all this, you know, gave that input.
Yes.
Helped you go over everything, we thank you guys.
And if we could get a motion to move the Chromebooks to-
For the Chromebook.
I make a motion to move the Chromebooks to action.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Uh.
We'll make that, um, action item D, because C was, um-
Interactive board.
The boards, yes, interactive board replacements. And D, the Chromebooks. Next, we have discussion of policy six thousand series.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
And Board, you've had these in your folder as well as the spreadsheet, uh, listing the changes, Hoots, Johnson, uh, are open to you for your input.
On the six thousand series, we will review these in detail and make recommendations at a subsequent meeting in the interim. If any board member has any question about any of the proposals, uh, please contact me.
Right, we briefly discussed this at the last meeting, I think, maybe you were remote and you would send any of your recommendations by email?
Okay, I'm, I'm preparing those now.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments, Board? Next, we'll move on to discussion of COVID-19 update.
Uh, Board, I sent out, uh, a revised list later in the day from that time, when I sent out that, the Health Department has updated their numbers, uh- When I sent out that, the Health Department has updated their numbers, uh, and it's, so just from your knowledge, they are four-hundred-and-twelve active cases as of today. Uh, on your page it says four-sixty-five, that is zero point nine percent of the population, uh, for today's data. In total cases, it's fifty-seven seventy-two, that's up from the fifty-seven thirty-two that was listed, uh, that is twelve point nine-six percent of the population instead of twelve point eight-eight. So, if you were given an update, that, that's the old one. That, that was the one in midday and I will send you the most updated one now. The other numbers stay the same, uh, you have in the packet there, the, the numbers since we started and our current numbers, our current numbers are very good. Uh, Ms. Campbell, if you could get the. The numbers are going down right now in the right direction. But I do want to point out, Ms. Rogers had asked the question last week about where we may be in the trend. And I've updated that as well today. And you can scroll down to the past. Keep scrolling. If you would, go back to that page five. As, as I explained to you in email, these, this numbers, these numbers here were before school started. These were the numbers of hospital tests, results, and quarantines, uh, for students and the hospital number for staff and the quarantines for staff. After this line is when school started the mask for option. As, it's on the screen, it may continue to be blown up a little bit. The first few days of school, we had four cases, one case, six cases, three cases, thirteen cases, two, eleven, and five. Yeah, that's a little bigger, let me move this side up a little bit. But the quarantines were the concerning number based off the CDC guidance there, uh, thirty-two, nineteen, forty-five, nineteen, one-seventy, thirty-four, seventeen, seventy-one, and eighty-four. At that point, for September first, that's the other gray line, is when we started going mask for virus. As the ruling goes, if you'll scroll up a little bit, please, you have to look back forty-eight hours after somebody gets COVID. So, the quarantine numbers were still high there for the first three tables, sixty-seven, forty, and twenty-nine. Since then, they have significantly reduced, twelve-seven, sixteen, twelve-seven. There was a big day on the night of thirty-one, uh, eight-six-two, nineteen, twenty-nine, six-two, seven-two, and zero, but I expect those after the weekend numbers, those will change some. The teach staff numbers have stayed relatively the same. Uh, a lot of that has to do with, anecdotally, we have not asked our staff, but from holding the vaccine clinic last year, we are assuming that around seventy-five percent of the staff are vaccinated, which keeps them from having to be quarantined, where many of our students are not of the age to do that, or parents may not choose. Again, that's, I don't see that as our role, that's up between the family and their family physician to decide what's best for them. But you can see clearly that the numbers have dropped off. Uh, Ms. Campbell, can you roll down again, please? So, the first twenty-two days before school, those numbers were there for student quarantines and, and positive results, that's from August first until then. I do not believe that's complete data, that's just of data that we were given. Before masks, the nine days of school that we did mask pops, we had fifty-three positive cases and four-hundred-and-ninety-one quarantines. In the twenty days after masking, we had a hundred-and-twenty-seven positive, still roughly the same rate of positive cases, because most of those came from communities spread. But in twice the number of days, we went from four-hundred-and-ninety-one quarantines to three-hundred-and-seventeen, so a lot more students were in school. Now, if you'll roll down to the graph, please. This is what Mr. Rogers had asked about, and if you'll pull that projector a little bit to the left, I'll take a. Back at this line here, and if you'll scroll it down just a little bit, this was in January, uh, I'm sorry, I'll go to the other one, to the box. On January tenth, the county had a high of three-hundred-and-twenty active cases. On that week, Stokes County schools had an increase of nineteen cases. Our high was twenty a little bit later. The second peak that we're experiencing now was on August twenty-ninth, where the county had a hundred-and-ninety-eight cases, new cases that week, but Stokes County schools had seventy-seven new cases that week. So, as you can see, the peak during the winter, we were nearly four times as high as that in the last week of August. So, while the county's peak was higher in the winter, our peak was higher at the start of school. And we'll blow this up a little bit more, if you'll scroll down to the next page. This is back in January, blown up just around from November to the first of March. The same graph just spread out a little bit, but it shows the weeks of what the new cases were. All right, and so then, if you'll scroll down further, those are the students and the teachers at the bottom. What the students you see were nineteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, there's a missing data point there, but it's around week forty-three, uh, staff were down low, that's all time, while the county's numbers were up higher. If you'll scroll down.
So, does that dictate also the quarantine numbers?
No, so this is just.
Just the active tests, okay.
So, then this is what we're currently in. And as you can see, the county numbers did take a dip from two-hundred to one-fifty-two, but then it went up to one-ninety-eight, and that was our high watermark with students, that August twenty-ninth. Then we started masking and our numbers, positive numbers started going down while the counties are still going up. So, it went from one-ninety-eight to the county, up to two-fifteen, it's up to two-twenty-five now. They're still on a trajectory going up, or if you'll scroll ours down a little bit. Since we've started masking, we went from seventy-seven to forty-five to twenty-six last week. So, our numbers in the school are going in the right direction right now. That's not quarantine, those are positive case results. Now, what I looked at is back during the winter, there were fif- fourteen out of fifteen weeks in the winter where the county had triple-digit new cases per week. That's what I consider the peak. It lasted from mid-November to mid-February. Right now, in our county, we're in a seven-week stretch of triple digits. So, maybe halfway through what the peak was in the winter. I will say that the peak this time has gone faster, so maybe we'll get out of it a little faster, but I, I, I won't, don't wanna answer that because that's statistician and epidemiologist that I'm not qualified to do, but I wanted to show you what our numbers have been right now. Uh, I've also asked Kami Martin, our Health Director, to be here tonight if she would like to kind of speak about the state of Stokes as well and answer any questions you may have.
Uh, he summed up everything. We have seen a decline in the students being quarantined since the mask went back, and, um, that's due to the strong schools toolkit of having to quarantine. If you've been close to a positive, we're not having to quarantine as many students now. Um, the county, like he said, is up and I think we're kinda leveling off right now and heading downward, and I hope we stay downward. I can't predict the future, but I hope we do. And we have had more hospitalized here in the past few weeks.
Doug, is her mic on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Yeah, he's having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. But we have had more hospitalized in the last few weeks. None of those have been children. We've not had any children, any children die in Stokes County.
Are we still at the youngest patient that's been hospitalized, twenty-seven years old, is that correct?
Yes, as far as I know.
Yeah, it was several weeks ago when we started.
And the ones that are like, the last week, you've seen the increase in the DAS, those are not long-term care facilities, like, last year they were more long-term care facilities. These are just, you have fifty, sixty, seventy-year-olds, just general public. And we're trying to keep, um, up now with the hospitals of getting whether they've been vaccinated or unvaccinated, cause I know someone's gonna bring that up along the way, but some are vaccinated, so it can go either way.
Okay, my question is, let's say we have a student test positive for COVID. At, at that point, what happens in the process to determine who is quarantined and who is not?
Generally, the school nurses will be notified first by the family, the principal of the school, and if not, then we call, when we get our numbers in every day, we get faxes from the hospital, and then they will do contact tracing, the school nurses, because they're supposed to have seating charts and know where everybody sat, and that way, previously, if you were unmasked and within three feet, then you had to be quarantined. But now, if you were both wearing masks, you don't have to be quarantined if they're positive. So, that's cutting down on our quarantine numbers.
And the quarantine is?
Ten days.
And that's in for, or, that's on your privy, right, as?
That is, CDC recommends fourteen. We can do, local health departments have the choice of ten days, or they can do the seven-day with test on the fifth day, and the school nurses have been taking care of that if students wanna do that. We're still sticking to ten days because we can handle that better with all the other that we're handling.
But under the privy of government, the quarantine, the quarantine is, is your call?
Yes.
Okay.
Once, uh, somebody goes to the doctor, they take the test, test comes back positive, how long does it take for the Health Department to have that information? I mean, if they go, I'll say, to Guilford County or Forsyth County, how long does it take Stokes County to get that information?
Here lately, it's been two to three days.
Okay.
We'll get it back. Some are automatically loaded into our NC COVID system, some are still being faxed, and we're trying to get those people onboarded with actually entering in, in NC COVID, so it gets to us quicker.
Okay.
And we check those every day but Sunday.
And, and, um, I got a question is, who is responsible for the contract tra- contact tracing? I know we've, uh, Dr. Rice has told us before that our principals had worked long hours doing contact tracing. Is that the school's responsibility or is that the Health Department's responsibility?
I know the school nurses have been helping because they have the seating charts, and if need be, they will give us a list, email it, and we call, too.
But whose responsibility ultimately is it?
Right now, we've gave it to the school nurses. But we are in the process of hiring a school nurse liaison between the schools and us that will be able to go out and do more COVID, just COVID, she's only gonna be COVID. And if need be, I think we may start doing the rapid test, cause she can travel. But right now, we are having to have school nurses do contact tracing, whereas we're doing the contact tracing for the others.
But is it the Health Department's responsibility ultimately, or is it the schools providing the nurses?
It's our responsibility, we do have, state has let us have help.
Right.
But we only have one person right now helping. And, um, we talked to Dr. Rice and the school nurses prior to school starting, and they agreed to help do the contact tracing.
If it was summertime and we were not in school, the Health Department would be responsible for all of it.
Right.
But with, knowing that, we know who was wearing classroom or lunchroom or whatever that, that they don't have. If they didn't have that, it would just be the word of the patient, if you, if you will, but this, there's a little bit more quantifying of who actually wears a closed mask.
Could you explain, just, could you explain how that contact, contact tracing, uh, the, uh, way it works?
The nurse will call the positive patient and then they will ask them who they have been around within that less than three feet without a mask when they had symptoms. And they name the people they were around, and then they get called and told they have to quarantine because they've been named a contact to a positive. We have to go off of what that positive person tells us. No matter what you see on social media or what so-and-so says, we can only go by what they tell us. So, we can't quarantine people after the fact that they're like, you know, I saw him with Suzie down the street. If he didn't name her, then we can't do anything with her.
And, and so you rely on the school, too, to say?
Yeah, because they're supposed to have, like, seating charts and know who they sit beside of at lunch, they can get the information when we're not there to see it.
Right, right. So, whoever's the contact at the school is very important, that they're accurate and...
Right, and I'm sure the school nurses are asking the teachers, like, at lunch, who they sit beside of, and I think they're having to keep seating charts, they did last year, I'm sure they are now, so they'll know on this day, this is who they're sitting beside of.
Right, right. It's a hard job. Thank you for all you did.
Basically, I mean, we all know by the state rules, in order to stay in school and stay in person, masks have to be worn. If not, everybody ends up exposed and quarantined and sit home.
Right, and by their toolkit right now, the only way to keep the most students in school is by the mask-on-mask.
So, that's the frustrating thing for me, you know, as a Board member, and, you know, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but, you know, we ultimately did not prefer masks, but when the state says, oh, we'll let you vote on it, but by the way, if you don't wear masks, your whole school's eventually gonna end up at home or you're gonna end up virtual, and we could see based on the data that Mr. Sands shared with us earlier that COVID and virtual, it fails students. I mean, students don't thrive virtually. Um, anyway, I agree.
Forty, forty percent of our students in middle and high had an F on their report card virtually, and our test scores were down twenty-three percent.
Yeah.
We really have to think about the students and keeping them in school, we really do. We have to look at the big picture.
The mental health of our kids is not good with these masks and everything, but it's also not good when they're quarantined away from their friends and stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, all you had to do is look at, uh, some of the problems we had with, uh, suicide, attempted suicide, stuff like that last year, it's just.
During virtual.
It's hard, yeah, it's hard on our kids.
It is. I agree, cause we are seeing more mental issues, too.
Yeah.
So, I agree.
That's what bothers me more than anything is the kids' mental health and stuff, too, from all this.
And that will be years to come also.
Yeah.
Is that, any more questions?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Go get some rest, you, you deserve it.
Next, we have discussion of COVID policy, item F.
And this is actually, it says G in your board packet, but that law, uh, Senate Bill six fifty-four is listed as G, and then the sample policy from Mr. Johnson is also listed as G, but it is in there, uh, after that. I'm sorry, before that, where it says discussion F, COVID policy, and it is there. Mr. Johnson, would you like to?
I've got.
Walk through it, okay?
I drafted this based on Senate Bill six fifty-four, which requires the Board of Education to vote at least once a month on whether face covering policy should be modified. The current policy adopted by the Board is to require face masks in accordance with the toolkit. And that's what the policy provides. The policy provides that the Board, it's, it's the Board's prerogative to determine whether or not it will require masks, that if the Board does require masks, then the rules specified in the toolkit will apply in terms of quarantine, et cetera. And that's the basis upon which the Department of Health and Human Services has made its regulations. The North Carolina Administrative Code requires that. The North Carolina Administrative Code requires that, that the recommendations of the CDC be adopted, and requires all persons shall comply with those control measures. So I know you've read, heard about the issue in Union County and perhaps in Lincoln County, the action taken by the Department of Health and Human Services to require that those policies adopted by those boards be modified in order to comply with the toolkit. And as I understand it, that was the action taken by Union County today.
What did they decide today exactly?
They modified their...
Original, did they reverse?
Original plan and said they will follow the quarantine regulations prescribed by the state, which are those in the toolkit. They still have masks as being option.
But they have almost eight thousand in quarantine now, right?
Correct. One of the highest in the state.
Do you know how many, how many students they have in their district?
No, I don't.
If they have eight thousand in quarantine, they have, must have a pretty big district.
Oh, right.
It is, it's a bedroom to Mecklenburg, so. I think somebody's about to give us the number.
We're looking it up.
I can tell his mask is fogging up. He's working hard.
They have forty-one thousand five hundred students.
So that's twenty percent.
Almost.
And in nine, and in nine days, we were at nine percent of ours were called.
Okay.
But here again, as required by that Senate bill, what, whatever you decide today has to be looked at again within thirty days.
So first of all, we will need to, this policy, because of the urgency of it, does it need to sit for thirty days or move directly to action tonight, if y'all are happy with the way that this reads now?
And even if you don't adopt this, you're, the policy of the board is what was approved at the, at the last time you, you addressed this subject. So that, that remains in effect unless you vote to change that tonight.
So is everybody happy with the way this reads for our policy? This is, just gets to the requirements, not all the extra stuff that the School Board Association recommended? This kind of just fits exactly to what the law requires?
Make a motion to move this draft to action.
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor? So that will be action, item E. And thank you for it. I think, I know it's a much more, you know, precise, condensed. It wasn't all this extra lingo and things that the school board policy had added. So I, I like this one better.
Mr. Johnson, to stay in compliance with the law, the last time they voted to affirm my decision, will they need, do we, do we need to make an approval on the agenda tonight? And after we vote that this policy is in effect, then the next item, B, item F, to vote on whether or not masking or not to be in compliance?
Exactly. Every, at least every thirty days.
So E will be the policy, forty-two, thirty-one, and then F will be?
If the board gets a motion in a second to make a vote on whether or not face masks will be required.
Okay.
Do we have that motion?
Yeah, is there a motion? A motion by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Robertson, all those in favor? Any opposed? So item F would be the vote on whether or not...
An approval of a face mask procedure, or for lack of a better term.
Right. Next, we have discussion of remote learning plan.
Rose.
All right, thank you, board members. As you all are aware, you've been talking about Senate Bill 654. The remote learning plan is also part of that bill, and this one has hit rather quickly. Governor signed that in on the thirtieth. They released these templates on September eighth, and I met with our curriculum team on Monday, September thirteenth, to go ahead and jump on this template and get it in place as quickly as possible. When we're talking about the remote learning plan, we're talking about five possible days that can be used to address weather emergencies and things of that nature, so that we're allowed to provide remote instruction. Then we're also talking about some of our school closures due to COVID situations that we have seen, you know, already this school year. This plan goes through, and it discusses what procedures we're going to use as we are addressing remote instruction. It is a forty-four question survey, and as we went through, we went and we identified the programs that our teachers would be using during remote learning. We did identify our Google Meet as the synchronous learning option. We discussed Canvas and Google Classroom, identified the grade spans that would be using that. We talked about our attendance policies, and we went through with each detail, answering each question together. In addition to going through this, I also attended DPI's office hours on September fourteenth, just to get a little bit of further guidance. On the remote learning plan, it does require board approval, as we move forward with that. And they set a very tight deadline on this, as October one, that they wanted those submitted as well. So I wanted to make sure that I got this out in front of you, to also let you know that the remote learning plan is very similar to what we did last year, with our synchronous options for students, asynchronous learning through the learning management system, multiple options to display that you are present and attentive to the learning. So, you know, we tried to build in the, the flexibility components that we could to be successful within that. So at this time, I will open things up for questions regarding what we're doing and how this sort of applies within this template.
Do you think this remote learning plan will be an improvement over what we have?
I think we will constantly evaluate what we have done. You know, when you're looking at this, we're looking to try to mimic in-person instruction as much as possible remotely. Getting everybody on synchronously can, you know, it can be challenging. We know that we have internet connectivity issues. We're trying to address each component of this plan to the best of our ability to improve constantly, you know, what we are doing. I know that, you know, the principals have the links to go into these learning management systems and monitor. I've sat down with principals when I've gone to visit already, as we've had some of these closures, and seen the principal doing their walkthroughs and evaluating the product that we're putting out to our kids and our families. So, you know, in that regard, I think we will do a better job of monitoring what we are doing, and that may be one component we can reflect and really make some improvements.
Yeah, I mean, we can't force engagement. So that's the parental portion.
And again, we're talking about the remote plan, we are talking about the kids that are in, you know, the quarant- quarantine, or when we have the school closures, what we're talking about, and then these remote days that, that Dr. Rice would use for the weather situations.
Okay.
Sorry, I did see one of the pages, pages that mentioned, you know, options providing community Wi-Fi locations, and also paper-based for students that do not have internet. Also, are the state hotspots going to be available? I mean, I don't want to see us have to use any of this, but, I mean, that is a great need here in the county as far as...
Right. I will sort of give a little shout out to the Northwest Regional Library. They have some that they are sharing with us at this time. We are hopeful to apply for a grant and possibly gain some more hotspots for our students to use. You know, we, we still have to get that grant in place and see if we are awarded that funding. But that would be our, our hope.
Now, this grant, how much is it for? I mean, is it going to cover fifty percent, seventy-five percent of the hotspots we need, or a hundred percent? What is it?
I would have to defer sort of to Karen on that. As far as with the hotspots, I mean, last year, our usage, would this grant cover our need for hotspots completely if we were to be awarded that grant?
The NC student connect, we were able to keep the hotspots that were given to us last year, so they allowed us to keep those. The monthly fee was not continued, so that part was discontinued. So this grant will allow us to get that same rate or same monthly payment and use those same devices. So we've got forms sent out to the principals to apply, and student needs, based on student needs, and so the principals are needing to have those in school to apply, so that we can determine how many we need to apply for.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, as we know, there's still certain parts of our county where hotspots are not helpful. I mean, there's just, just like there's places where your cell phone's going to cut out, we were talking about that before the meeting, the, the same thing. If, if you're not, if a cell phone provider's not going to carry it there, some of the hotspots are not going to work in those same areas. And so those are some of the challenges that we face regardless of that solution.
Right. Also, one thing that came across somewhat confusing within DPI's guidance to us was regarding the number of days that we were remote last year. If you look at the number of days that we were completely closed off, and every student in our district was on remote, that would be our Plan C. If you look at the students who received a virtual option, there were students who remained virtual for the entire year. DPI, within that question, would not allow us to put in any words, because as you all know, when we were able to bring our elementary students back, we did. So really, to answer that question appropriately, I feel like I need a grade span option to be able to put some wording within that. But they should be giving me a little more guidance within that to make sure I answer that portion correctly. They have other office hours this week, and I plan to attend and see if they have gotten some further guidance for us on that. That is the one component within the plan that I still feel a little bit shaky on, based on the guidance of DPI. But I would like to fix that based on the guidance from DPI that I received this week, and move forward with submitting the plan with you all's blessing. So what I will ask for is, if you are comfortable with this plan, I'd like to move this to action, so that I can meet the October first deadline.
Is there a motion to move this item?
I'll make a motion to move this item to action.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So would be, all those in favor? Would be item G, remote learning plan?
Thank you, board members.
We will have to skip over item A, because we were not finished with that, closed session item, as far as approval of personnel and coaching.
I thought we finished with personnel. Didn't we not finish personnel?
We didn't finish coaching.
Okay.
Next would be item B, policy five thousand, that we've had for quite some time now to review. Is there a motion to approve policy five thousand series?
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have the interactive boards. And again, when making the motion, you need to state if it's option B and, and...
I'm trying to get to that page.
What exactly we would like to move forward with there, with the details in that motion.
Madam Chair, I'm making a motion to approve second choice B, with the addition of seventy-five inch monitors for the four hundred and sixty wall-mounted applications, to, to conclude at approximately two point one four six, three one six, and twenty-six cents.
That's what the I five...
That's what the I, the I, as presented with the addition of the seventy-five inch monitors, approximately, there is some leeway there, because I'm not sure on the sales tax calculations.
Right.
So it was four hundred and sixty, seventy-five inch?
Yes.
And that's going to leave us forty-two, sixty-five inch?
Forty-two on mobile stands with eleven of, and eleven of which are desktops.
So the...
Or tabletops.
Tabletops.
So would the five oh two go to forty-two? On, on second choice B, the quantity of sixty-five inches, five oh two, so we move that to forty-two?
It would be...
What line?
Second line. Four sixty...
Five hundred and two sixty-five inch, which would have to go to seventy-five inch, right?
It would go to what?
Five hundred and two of them will go to seventy-five inch instead of sixty-five.
Well, actually, I only calculated four hundred and sixty, because that's all that's wall-mounted. The other eleven are tabletops, they have to be sixty-fives. And then the forty-two mobile stands, I, I had chosen sixty-five for the mobility portion and the additional left...
Right, so the, so the second line down, the sixty-five inch, would go from the five oh two would drop down to, to forty-two.
Four hundred and sixty, seventy-five inches, what you're saying, right?
Yeah. Four hundred and sixty wall-mounted, eleven, and then forty-two mobile stands and eleven tabletops.
Yeah.
So it'd be fifty-three of them.
That gets to five thirteen total.
Does that motion clear the financial hurdle of if I'm a dollar or two off? Okay.
I second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have item D, the Chromebook approval, as far as the upgrades to the Chromebooks.
I make a motion to accept the Chromebook approval.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have approval of policy forty-two, thirty-one, with the recommended mask policy.
I'm going to say recommend, I'm going to say required.
Required mask policy. Is there, you said you motioned it, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have item E, I mean, excuse me, F, approval of the face mask procedure, which is required by the state to vote upon this.
For wording purposes, let's call this practice, because it's not in our procedure manual.
So approval of face mask practices.
With thirty-day renewal.
Yes, with thirty-day renewal.
That's a maximum of thirty days.
Right.
Do we need to vote on it at each board meeting to stay within that?
We do have to vote on it.
That's what I would think.
Just every month? We're required every month, but we can vote, I guess, as often as we like?
It's required at least once a month.
Yeah.
I've got one question of the attorney. If we chose to rescind it at any point, can we call an emergency meeting? I just don't think anybody wants to put a mask on.
None of us do.
No.
I want to get these diapers off as fast as possible.
Speaking of that, there is one option in here that I did not do when I started. I said indoors, that are occupied by students and where adults cannot socially distance. One question that has come up since then, I apologize for that, I turned that off. One question that's come up then, since then, is what about athletics indoors? Right now, it's volleyball is the indoor activity that's going on. Outdoor activities are not required to wear masks. Now, they are subject to quarantines. So if the football team is huddled up on the sideline and somebody gets it, they risk a third, a fourth, half the football team going into quarantine. And we have faced that this year. There's been at least one football game canceled, JV maybe two games. Uh, JV, maybe two games have been canceled. Uh, several middle school sports have been canceled. But the toolkit does not give a benefit to wearing a mask in extracurriculars, uh, sports. So even if we're both masked and playing volleyball, if she gets it, I still have to quarantine. If I'm within six feet for 15 minutes. So that question would be, is when kids are actively playing, if you're sitting on the bench, wear masks, but when you get ready to enter the game, take it off to play. So volleyball, the reason I bring this up is because winter sports are coming soon with basketball and wrestling. Uh, spring, there's none inside, are there? No, there, there is indoor track, but that's a winter sport as well. Uh, so that would be one option that I would like to throw on the table for you to consider as you get ready to make this vote of whether or not for active participants in athletics indoors, do, do they need to wear a mask as well? Uh, I would recommend no, but that is a board decision.
I've got to agree with you on that. Uh, these kids playing, I mean, it's hard enough to breathe sitting here. Much less a kid out there playing their heart out, giving 110%.
Can that also apply?
All that's going to do is raise their CO levels and stuff and actually hurt them.
Can that also apply to other active sport, sporting things going on, like in a gym or?
It can. It, it, and cheerleading would be active participating in that. But if you're asking about PE classes and things like that, again, the toolkit is, is made this optional for boards. It's just the more kids that are around each other, if someone tests positive with that contact tracing, the more kids go home. And so the reason I make the recommendation the way I did is because they're going to go home anyway. Because there isn't an exemption for extracurriculars where if we're in, and, and again, I'm not trying to say this makes sense. This, this does not make sense. If I'm playing volleyball for the team, Ms. Knight and I are both playing volleyball for the team, and we're both wearing masks, one of us catches COVID, we both go home. If we're playing volleyball in PE and we're both wearing masks, she gets COVID, I, I don't have to go home. Again, that makes no sense. You can do the same activity, but if it's during the school day, the rules say that you don't have to quarantine. But if it's an extracurricular, you do, even if it's the same exact actions. So that's why my recommendation would be for the extracurriculars indoor. Again, we're talking about cheerleading, volleyball, basketball, wrestling, uh, those indoor sports, indoor track, if they're doing something indoor track, that, you know, like we did last year. If you're sitting on the bench, if you're going into the gym, you would still wear it. But if I'm checking into the game, I pull it off and I go play until I come back and sit down. And again, that's just a recommendation.
I like that statement myself.
I'm definitely okay with that.
Yeah, I am too.
Any other discussion?
Do we need a motion to add that to it?
We'll need to make a motion for what, whatever you're making the motion for. Uh, what my recommendation was for when students are occupying a building and staff members cannot socially distance, then masks were required. If you wanted to do that same wording and then add to it, and if you're actively participating in an extracurricular activity indoors, you would be exempt from wearing the mask.
Let me ask this. Fred? Is there not some way we can just give him after-school authorities so that he can enforce it as necessary? And we take the, we take the responsibility for the academic? Because I don't think the, I don't think the Senate Bill Law states that we have to vote every month on that one.
No, we, we could, see the Department of Administration regulations to implement policy, one of those regulations could be able to have it. State. Certain rules regarding athletics.
Can Fred please speak into the mic?
Sorry.
Thank you, Pam.
To go back. Superintendent could adopt administrative regulations to implement the policy. Those regulations could govern, uh, athletics. If, if they're done in accordance with the regulations, uh, that the state may impose, such as the High School Athletic Association.
I'm just trying to give this board as much flexibility as we can to rescind it as much.
I will say with, even if we make that rule, that would be for home contests. When we go to other places, we are bound to their rules.
Right.
And so it's, you know, it's kind of like, I might not want to wear shoes in my house, but if your rule is you wear shoes, I'm going to keep my shoes on. So when we visit, we follow their, their home rules.
And that would be my recommendation that we do that, allow the superintendent to do that by administrative regulation, which can be modified as, as needed.
So we don't really have to do anything then?
Not.
So, okay.
We, well, we do have to make that vote on whether or not you're going to require.
During the school day.
Right, but what I'm saying is for the after-school, we don't have to touch it. It's still under your administration privy.
So is there a motion? For item F. I don't want to misspeak, so I'm not making a motion, but is there a motion?
This is that motion nobody wants to make.
Right, I know.
I mean, what do you do? Your hands are tied.
Our hands are tied to keep kids in school and.
By the state.
That, again, as, as said, in nine days, 9% of our student body were quarantined.
And three schools were closed.
And three schools were closed.
Who says you're going to follow any CDC government?
So.
That's a Health Department regulation, isn't it? And they can shut us down.
They can not let any of us go to school.
As she stated.
Lock the doors. It's terrible.
What do we do if we have no such motion, Fred?
Well, your current policy stays in effect. I'm not sure if it's been 30 days since the.
It wasn't an official vote of the record, though. It was not moved to action to vote on it. They affirmed my decision. We could have another meeting before the end of the month.
What if we just chose not to follow that one?
Follow what?
Follow this requirement, this law.
Uh, well.
We face the same thing that Union County did where the lawyers swoop in?
Yes, the, the state can enforce it. Department of Health and Human Services can enforce it. They have the statutory authority to enforce it through the local health director. So in other words, so what you're saying is if we don't do anything tonight, the Health Department could come in and close our schools tomorrow if they wanted to. Well, I'm not going to say if, if they wanted to. I think they'd have to show that you violated the state requirements. But right now, the only requirement we've got, and this is, you know, this is from the legislature. Right.
So this is.
It says you must vote at least once a month on whether or not the face covering policy should be modified. Your current face covering policy is to require it. So I'm not saying you have to vote tonight, but you just got to vote once a month.
I mean, every single one of you mess with your mask the entire time, you're done. You're sitting there pulling away from your.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He has it working. He's almost out of meetings.
Sorry, we'll have to stay in order. We can't get into a roundtable discussion. I'm probably. Okay.
The labor, the ring layers right here, he had noise the whole time. He can't speak without, neither can the long rocks. But y'all would say kids sitting there. Hell, wow. I mean, say it not for our kids.
Okay, order. Is there a motion or where are we with this? So.
May, maybe it's difficult to know how to word it. So, you know, that might be the problem there. How wording the motion correctly. Maybe we need help on that.
Help with the wording of the reg.
The motion is, is simply whether or not the current policy should be modified. Uh, if, the, the current policy is requiring face covering.
I can't hear you. What?
The, the current policy is to require face coverings. You've got to vote whether or not to modify that current policy at least every 30 days. So you've got that 30-day window.
To require face coverings and to, um, vote every 30 days as a board.
Vote every 30 days on whether or not to require face coverings.
So you can make a motion to continue the current face covering practice, or you could make a motion to modify it or change it.
With a vote in no less or no more than 30 days.
At least once a month.
At least once a month. I wouldn't get into that 30, 31 days because just the way the days of the month follow for meetings of five-week month or something, it may, but at least once a month.
So you've got to vote at least once in September.
Okay, so we know what we have to do with current face covering practice.
I know y'all have a hard fight, but a lot of your citizens are here for, for y'all to take this decision. I mean, y'all need to take consideration of what we say. I mean, some of our kids.
You don't need to be talking.
I know. I'm sorry. We have to just try to stick with the business. We don't, you know, not disagree with you or agree, you know what I'm saying? We just have to continue with our discussion here. Um, so is there a motion like was stated or to continue with the current policy or, and to vote again in once a month?
We're going to have to vote again once a month either way.
Right.
Yeah, we're, we're going to vote every month.
And, yeah, we got about some vote every meeting. That way we can get it off quicker. So we know what we've got to do now.
Well, nothing, nothing stops us from voting every meeting if we want to.
Right.
So we're required to vote, vote at least, vote at least once a month.
Yeah. Now, on our quarantine rules, just to be clear, we have cut the number basically in half.
About 25%.
About 25% of what we're.
The number's cut in half, but the days have doubled.
Right.
We went from 543 to 52. So we cut 90%.
Yes, sir. And that's a lot of kids keeping them in school where they need to be. I don't like it any better than anybody else.
We're going to be required, from my understanding from the attorney, to take action or have a special call meeting before the month is up, so.
Yeah.
Well, we don't want that.
Mm-mm.
I mean, that's nine more days to the end of the month, so we barely have got enough time to call a meeting. Put it off a little.
What happens if everybody abstains from voting?
Current policy would remain.
What was that?
The current policy.
Current policy would remain in effect.
But would that put them in jeopardy of violating general statute of a no vote?
Still going to have to vote in, in September.
Okay.
I guess we would hope that, you know, this will trend back down. Sure. Numbers will get under control and masks can come off. And we said when we voted for masks optional in the beginning that we knew this could happen. We knew it.
Yeah.
Uh, and that we asked, you know, everybody to realize that it can be an up and down thing as much as we hate it. So.
I don't think there's a person on this board or in this room really that wants a mask on. None of us do. But.
But I think everybody on the board wants their kids to be in school at the same time.
Exactly. And do we try to get them to wear a mask the best that they can and just let it be until this passes or?
Which three schools were quarantined or were?
Piney Grove Southeastern and King Elementary.
So we had two middles and one elementary.
Last year, we had Mount Olive and King Element, King, uh, Chestnut Grove Middle. Those were the two we had last year. Last year, we did not have a case of school spread. Until February, uh, this year, we have had 12 cases of school spread already.
Are there any schools currently with zero?
Zero positive cases right now?
Mm-hmm. Or zero from the beginning? No.
Oh, zero from the beginning, no.
Everybody's had some.
Make it, I'll second.
Trying my best, think some way around this one.
Tell me about it.
Somebody's got to make it.
Every, every school has had a positive case this year.
But currently?
Currently, no, I mean, currently we're London, Pine Hall, Pinnacle, and the Early College do not have an active case as of when I pulled the date at 4 o'clock this afternoon.
So all but four of our schools?
Correct.
All but four.
38.
Of the 19.
All but three of our schools.
Yeah. So we motioned to add the item to action. Approval of the face mask practice with the 30, with the monthly vote, um, on the face mask practice. Or it is on our action unless we're going to abstain or choose not to act or do something. We would have to move forward because we do have another item on the action agenda with the, uh, Remote Learning Plan.
All right, I'm going to make the motion. For the greater good of the students in this county, we have to keep the students in school. The remote learning last year, as great as the teachers did and as attentive as the students were, it just made our scores drop. The students didn't learn as much as they could have. There was a lot of emotional problems with students having to stay home. We've already had three schools that had to be closed and, you know, they had to be quarantined. We have to really look at the big picture. We have to really look at the big picture. And we have to go by what, uh, the Health Department, um, tells us. And we have to look at the guidelines from, um, you know, the Department of Public Construction. So I make a motion that we continue the current face covering practice and to vote at least once a month, you know, as to what our status will be. I make the motion.
Yeah, and I, and I would say too, uh, I don't think there's anybody in this room that likes wearing a mask. I hate wearing them. I think everybody does. Um, I've got a, a daughter that's in school. She's not crazy about wearing a mask. I know, uh, Ms. Knight's got children in school. They're not crazy about wearing a mask. But I do agree with what Ms. Messick said. For the greater good of the schools, for the greater good of keeping our kids in school, uh, it's very obvious with our quarantine numbers that our quarantine numbers have dropped tremendously since we started wearing a mask. If we take, if we had 500 kids in quarantine for a 10-day quarantine, if we take out two days for, um, a weekend, that's 4,000 education days that we've missed. We can't afford to do that. As this is Mr. Sands was showing us those numbers tonight, uh, remote learning or kids at home trying to learn does not work. We've got to keep our kids in school, and I think we have responsibility to that. Not everybody wants to send their kid to school with a mask on. I understand that. But the kids, you know, uh, I've been in the schools and the kids, once they're in the school, they don't seem to mind it too bad. The kids get along pretty good wearing a mask. I think a lot of it comes from home. And I think we've got to, you know, we've got to make sure we keep our kids safe. So with that said, I do second the motion Ms. Messick made.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed?
And I will add, this has nothing to do with funding. What a lot of people say about funding, it has $0 difference.
It is keeping the doors open or getting them locked by the state and the Health Department.
Or having zero kids in the class.
Right, zero kids in class. Next, we have item G, um, the remote learning plan as presented by Mr. Rose. Is there a motion to approve the remote learning plan?
I make a motion to approve the remote learning plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Next, we have information and announcements. Mr. Jones?
Board members, I just want to point out, our next meeting, October the 4th, is a work session beginning at 6 o'clock PM. And then down at the bottom, you'll notice the Fall Law Conference is October 13th to the 15th. If you have an interest in attending that and have not spoken with Dr. Rice, uh, please do so after the meeting. He can get you more information.
All right, I didn't hear that about October 13th.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's when the North Carolina School Boards Association Law Conference is. If you have an interest in attending that and have not spoken with Dr. Rice, he can get you more information after the meeting.
Okay, I, I'm going to want to attend that.
The one in Asheville?
No, 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 the one in Greensboro.
You want to do the one in Greensboro, right?
Not in Asheville. I don't want to go with you guys.
I need a motion to go into closed session, please.
Motion to go to closed?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Thank y'all. Have a good evening.
Is anybody listening to me?
Yes.
Sometimes.
Do I, do I call back in on the first number that I, or the first login I had?
Yes, ma'am. Please use the first number for closed session.
All right, thank you.
Yes.